To our Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Father, we give you praise and honor as we meet again tonight to study your word. Thank you for your goodness and mercy. As we continue with our study of the life of Moses, we declare our dependence on you. Open our eyes to see the wonderful truths in the scriptures. Give us understanding so that we will obey in your instructions and put them into practice. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Today, the topic is Moses' three requests from the Lord. Moses' three requests from the Lord. And we are focusing on Exodus, chapters thirty-three and thirty-four. Exodus thirty-three and thirty-four. In Exodus, chapter thirty-two, we saw how God was angry with the children of Israel for worshiping the golden calf and would have destroyed them if Moses had not interceded for them. Now we're going to start read Exodus thirty-three, verses one to eleven. Exodus thirty-three, one to eleven. Then the Lord said to Moses, depart and go up from here, you and the people whom you have brought out of the land of Egypt, to the land of which I swore to Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, saying, to your descendants, I will give it. And I will send my angel before you, and I will drive out the Canaanite, and the Amorite, and the Hittite, and the Perizzites, and the Hivites, and the Jebusites. Go up to a land flowing with milk and honey; for I will not go up in your midst, lest I consume you on the way; for you are a stiff-necked people. And when the people heard this bad news, they mourned, and no one put on his ornaments; for the Lord has said to Moses, say to the children of Israel, you are a stiff-necked people. I could come up into your midst in one moment and consume you. Now therefore, take off your ornaments, that I may know what to do with you. So the children of Israel stripped themselves of their ornaments by Mount Horeb. Moses took his tent and pitched it outside the camp, far from the camp, and called it the tabernacle of meeting. And it came to pass that everyone who saw the Lord went out to the tabernacle of meeting, which was outside the camp. So it was whenever Moses went out to the tabernacle that all the people rose, and each man stood at his tent door and watched Moses until he had gone into the tabernacle. And it came to pass, when Moses entered the tabernacle, that the pillar of cloud descended and stood at the door of the tabernacle, and the Lord talked with Moses. All the people saw the pillar of cloud standing at the tabernacle door, and all the people rose and worshipped, each man in his tent door. So the Lord spoke to Moses face to face, as a man speaks to his friend, and he will return to the camp. But his servant Joshua, the son of Nun, a young man, did not depart from the tabernacle. God said he would not destroy the people, but will still give them their own land, as he had promised Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. He told them to leave Sinai and continue on their journey to Canaan. He promised to send an angel before them to drive out the people who lived there. Even though God promised them victory, the people were distressed because God said he would not go with them. Why would God not go with them? The answer is in Exodus thirty-three, verse three. He says, I will not go up in your midst, lest I consume you on the way; for you are a stiff-necked people. Moses had secured their safety, but God still plagued the people because of the golden calf. God did not destroy them because of Moses' intercession. Lamentations three, twenty-two to twenty-three. Lamentations three, twenty-two to twenty-three tells us God's mercies are new every day. But for Jesus, we too would have been destroyed. Hebrews seven, twenty-five says, he's forever making intercession for us. Up till now, the Israelites had shown no evidence that they had really repented. The first sign of their repentance is in Exodus, chapter thirty-three, verse four. They mourned and put off their jewelry. But true repentance is more than sorrow. True repentance is a change of mind about one's sin and about God. It is a complete turning back on sin. God's words produce fear in the hearts of the people. It is dreadful to face life's physical and spiritual conflicts and be aware that God is not with you. A sin put a distance between us and God. Let's do what the Israelites did, humble ourselves before God, and turn away from our sins. Our God is merciful. We cannot face life's struggles without the presence of God. In spite of Joseph's brother's hatred for him and his consequence suffering, God's presence never left him. Four times in Genesis, chapter thirty-nine, we read, but the Lord was with Joseph, verses four, three, twenty-one, and twenty-three. But the Lord was with Joseph. No wonder he still became the prime minister of Egypt. When we go through trouble and suffering, we will not be destroyed because God is with us. Isaiah forty-one, ten says, fear not, and this is God telling us, fear not, for I am with you. Moses took the tabernacle, also known as the tent of meeting, and pitched it outside the camp. This tent of meeting was a temporary structure that Moses set up and used until the tabernacle, referred to as the tabernacle of Moses, was constructed. When Moses went up into the tent to meet with God, the pillar of cloud that represented God's presence descended. Whenever the people saw the cloud at the entrance of the tent, they all stood up and worshipped, each at the entrance of his tent. In Exodus thirty-three, eleven, Exodus thirty-three, eleven, we are told that the Lord spoke to Moses face to face, as a man speaks unto his friend. God considered Moses to be a close friend. He could talk face to face with him. This special relationship was partly due to the fact that Moses was completely devoted to God and to his desires and purposes. Every believer should demonstrate a desire to know God and his purposes in an intense way. Every one of us too should desire to be called God's friend. I'm sure we all sing the chorus, I am a friend of God. Are we? Now let's go on with the reading. Let's read chapter thirty-three, verses twelve to twenty-three. That is the rest of that chapter. Then Moses said to the Lord, see, you say to me, bring up this people; but you have not let me know who you will send with me. Yet you have said, I know you by name, and you have also found grace in my sight. Now therefore I pray, if I have found grace in your sight, show me now your way, that I may know you, and that I may find grace in your sight, and consider that this nation is your people. And he said, my presence will go with you, and I will give you rest. Then he said to him, if your presence does not go with us, do not bring us up from there, from here; for how will it be known that your people and I have found grace in your sight, except you go with us? So we shall be separate, your people and I, from all the people who are on the face of the earth. So the Lord said to Moses, I will also do this thing that you have spoken; for you have found grace in my sight, and I know you by name. And he said, please show me your glory. Then he said, I will make all my goodness pass before you, and I will proclaim the name of the Lord before you. I will be gracious to whom I will be gracious, and I will have compassion on whom I will have compassion. But he said, you cannot see my face, for no one shall see me and live. And the Lord said, here is a place by me, and you shall stand on the, on the rock. So it shall be, while my glory passes by, that I will put you in the cleft of the rock, and will cover you with my hand. Then I will take you away my hand, and you shall see my back; but my face shall not be seen. We're going to talk about these three requests that Moses made from God. The first one is found in verse thirteen. Now therefore I pray, if I have found grace in your sight, show me now your way, that I may know you, and that I may find grace in your sight, that I may know you, teach me your way, and that I may continue to find favor with you. Moses had been alone with God for forty days and forty nights on the mountain; yet he yearned to know God more intimately. But with all his support, power, with all his experiences, still prayed in Philippians three, ten, that I may know him, that is Christ. If you are a Christian, this is a petition to make often. All Christians claim to know God, but every one of us needs to know God more. What does it mean to know God? It does not mean to know about God through books, through the information given by a person, e.g. an evangelist or your pastor. This does not mean knowing God in a saving way. Then there is knowledge by experience. When Moses asked to know God, he wanted to know him in his daily experiences. He asked God to teach him his ways, so that he might continue to find favor with him. This should be our desire, no matter how long we have known the Lord. In fact, this desire should be greater now than when we first believed. Moses already had personal experiences of God. First at the burning bush, then on Mount Sinai. But he wanted more. The true knowledge of God can be found in the Bible. We will know God more and more deeply as we study his word, obey him, and worship him. His second request is found in verses fourteen to seventeen. Verse fifteen, let's start verse fifteen. He said to him, if your presence does not go with us, do not bring us up from here; for how then will it be known that your people and I have found grace in your sight, except you go with us? So we shall be separate, your people and I, from all the people who are on the face of the earth. So the Lord said to Moses, I will also do this thing that you have spoken; for you have found grace in my sight, and I know you by name. And I'm going back to verse fourteen. And he said, my presence will go with you, and I will give you rest. Moses was worried that God said he would not go personally with them, that he would send an angel with him. But Moses knew it would be impossible to lead the people without the Lord's presence. Moreover, he said, how will anyone know that you are pleased with me and with your people unless you go with us? What else will distinguish me and your people from all the other people on the face of the earth? And God told him, I will do this very thing you have asked, because I am pleased with you, and I know you by name. How I wish we could hear God saying this about us, that he's pleased with us, that his presence will go with us, as he told him in verse fourteen, my presence will go with you, and I will give you rest. It is important that every Christian, especially parents and leaders, should think as Moses did. We must be careful that we do not take a single step unless we are sure that God is leading us. We should not live as if we can plan our own lives, the lives of our children, the affairs of our church on our own. It makes a great difference to know that God is with us. When we know that God is with us, we believers can face the worst obstacles and the most powerful enemies. Thank God for his assurance of his presence in Isa-, in Isaiah forty-two, forty-three, verse two. Hear what God says to us. When you pass through the waters, I will be with you, and through the rivers, they shall not overflow you. When you walk through the fire, you shall not be burned, nor shall the flame scorch you. And then the request number three is found in verse eighteen. Please show me your glory. Moses seemed to be asking for the opportunity to see God in all his splendor. God said to Moses, God said Moses could not see him as he desired, but he promised to reveal his goodness and proclaim his name to Moses. The name of God sums up his character and reveals his glory. To know who God is and what he is like is far more important than to see him physically. His name, Jehovah, or Yahweh, sums up his attributes. He is eternal and self-sufficient. His glory is seen in his goodness, mercy, compassion, grace, love, long-suffering, and faithfulness, also his sovereignty. I will have mercy on whom I will have mercy, and I will have compassion on whom I will have compassion. Verse nineteen. In Exodus thirty-three, verse twenty, Exodus thirty-three, verse twenty, God told Moses, you cannot see my face. No one may see me and live. But God did give Moses a unique glimpse of his glory in Exodus thirty-four, verses five to eight, which I'm going to read. Exodus thirty-four, from verse five. Now the Lord descended in the cloud, and stood with him there, and proclaimed the name of the Lord. And the Lord passed before him and proclaimed, the Lord, the Lord God, merciful and gracious, long-suffered, and abundant in goodness and truth, keeping mercy for thousands, forgiving iniquity and transgression and sin, by no means clearing the guilty, visiting, visiting the iniquity of the fathers upon the children and the children's children to the third and the fourth generation. So Moses made haste and bowed, he said, towards the earth, and worshipped. When Moses came down from the mountain, his face glowed, reflecting God's glory in Exodus, chapter thirty-four, verse twenty-nine to thirty. The people could not look at his face and were afraid to approach him. Moses had to cover his face with a veil until the glory faded away. Do we spend quality time in God's presence? Then God intends his glory to be seen in our lives. We need to pray that God will do whatever he deserves to be done, so that others will see his glory through us. As we experience Christ's presence and power through prayer and the Holy Spirit, our lives are transformed, so that we become more like Jesus. This allows us, others, to get an accurate impression of Christ, what he is like and what he deserves to do in our lives. Hebrews one, three, Hebrews one, three, tells us that Christ is the brightness of God's glory. Moses did not even know that his face shone, but the children of Israel saw it. True Christian excellence is not conscious of its own beauty. I say that again, true Christian excellence is not conscious of its own beauty. Such beauty is not seen by those who possess it, but other people see it. Beware of people who boast about their own greatness or their own humility. The first time that Moses came back from the Lord, his face was distorted by anger as he broke the tablets. The second time, his face radiated with the glory of God, and the people were humbled by the mercies of God. The glory of God on his face searched out the hearts and conscience of the people and emphasized their unworthiness. When we get a glimpse of the glory of God, as Isaiah did in Isaiah, chapter six, we will be humbled, just as Isaiah was humbled. Now I want us to look at the, discuss the principle of leadership and following. Leadership and following. The pillar of fire by night and the pillar of cloud by day signify the visible presence of God going with the children of Israel. Exodus thirteen, twenty-one to twenty-two. Exodus thirteen, twenty-one to twenty-two. Through Moses' intervention, God had agreed that the presence, his presence, would go with them. He will personally lead them. The pillar of fire and the pillar of cloud indicate the principle of leading and following. It is God who leads us, but it is our duty to follow him. He knows the way and is leading us. Galatians five, sixteen, says, walk in the spirit, and you shall not fulfill the lust of the flesh. And Isaiah thirty, Isaiah thirty, verse twenty-one, says, and this is God speaking, your ears shall hear a word behind you, saying, this is the way, walk in it, whenever you turn to the right, or whenever you turn to the left. Israel left Sinai as a mighty nation. They had been given the law and a code of conduct, including how to serve and worship their Lord. They had also been given a system of sacrifices, how to approach God, a holy God. They had the tent of meeting, that is, the They had the tent of meeting, that is the tabernacle, God's dwelling place with them. Despite all these, they still murmured. Numbers eleven, four to six. Let's read about their murmuring this time, numbers eleven, four to six. Now the mixed multitude who were among them yielded to intense craving. So that the children of Israel also wept again and said, who will give us meat? Who will give us meat to eat? We remember the fish which we ate freely in Egypt. The cucumbers, the melons, the leeks, the onions, and the garlic. But now, our whole being is being dried up. There is nothing at all except this manna before our eyes. Verse four talks about a mixed multitude. That was among the Israelites, who influenced the children of Israel to weep, lusting after meat. The people in this mob, in this mob, were not Israelites. That is the mixed multitude among them. Rather, they joined Israel during the Exodus. According to Exodus, chapter twelve, verse thirty eight, Exodus twelve thirty eight. They influenced Israel to rebel against God. And caused them to hunger after the vain pleasures of Egypt. Many ministers today have a few people in their congregation who hamper the work of the church. And give ministers a headache by their complaints and comments stroke criticisms. Unless other believers are mature. Others will soon follow the pattern of these few disgruntled ones. The mixed multitude are a type of carnal, immature Christians. First Corinthians two fourteen will tell you about what it means to be a carnal Christian. They can never attain spiritual heights. Their minds are enmity towards God. God gave the Israelites meat. The meat was supplied, was supplied to show them God could furnish them with it. If it was his design. He sent them quails, that is meat, but destroyed them while it was yet in their mouths. They didn't appreciate the manner that God had given them. Many of us are like the Israelites. We're still looking for many things we have not got. But we do not appreciate the blessings that we have got. Psalm one hundred and six, verse fifteen says, God gave them their request. But sent leanness into their souls. We must beware of desiring and pursuing things that are not part of God's plans. When we insist on satisfying our selfish desires. God sometimes lets us have our own way. But he also allows us to experience the spiritual and physical consequences. God may allow us to have or perceive things that go against the desires, guidelines. And directions he has already shown us. For example, he may allow us to make bad choices. Concerning such things as our jobs, ungodly relationships, et cetera. It is called his permissive will, God's permissive will. When God says, this is the way, and you say, no God, I think I prefer that way. He allows you to go that way. It is called his permissive will. But his permissive will is not his perfect will for you and me. But in the end, those things have destructive results. And guess what? We blame God for it? Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you that you have again fed us with your word tonight. Thank you for your great promises. Lord, like Moses, we pray that we may know you more. That you may teach us your way so that we may find favor with you. And Father, that you will continue to reveal yourself to us, not just through the written word. But also through the living word, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Please transform our lives to reflect your glory. As we continue to spend quality time in your presence. Father, we bless your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time when we shall be discussing Moses' discouragement and complaints. Please read Numbers, chapters eleven and twelve before the teaching. Good night.